We'll call the order of the regular September Board Leader and Soul Community School District Board Directors. It is the mission of the Soul Community School District to get teaching every student in rigorous and relevant experiences and that's why there's achievements for exceptional teaching. Chris, can you call the roll?
Yeah, just uh.
Here? Here.
Walt?
Here.
Alessa?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
All present.
Thanks for everyone for being here tonight. Of course, it wants me to download stuff here, so I can't do that. Call the order, Walt, where everyone? We're just sort of off with celebrations, achievements. Davis?
Yeah, I just, since we're just getting back into the school year, there's not a lot of data we can share with you, except I, Sean, Sean worked on a video today. He interviewed the administrators, he's taken footages of some of the buildings, just to, we're gonna put a video together that just kind of shows what it looks like, some of our mitigation practice, what it looks like during the day, the classrooms, the lunchroom, the hallways, and just to kind of give a sense of the measures that have taken place to return kids to onsite learning safely. So that's gonna be coming out here probably within the next couple of days to kind of show what the return to learn actually looks like in action. And I did want to mention, we were talking today, we've had four cases, and we've had that as a maximum, we reached a peak of thirty-one quarantines. But of those four cases, none of them were spread within the schools. Those cases occurred outside the system, and so we have done an excellent job in preventing spread within the school buildings. And so I wanted to celebrate that and highlight that point.
Okay, and then administrative reports, blended learnings.
Yeah, I'm gonna have Josh talk about that. We knew in our return to learn that this was on the radar even before the pandemic, but we had to accelerate some things because of the pandemic. And I'm gonna let Josh kind of talk about the professional development that he's put into place. The two of our four buildings have participated in.
All three so far.
All three, okay, so I'm gonna let you talk about blended learning.
So the blended learning, and I put a, hold that. No, I think it's almost to the top there. Did you get blended learning on there, Chris?
Uh, yeah, it's, we're four months.
Well, Davis is talking about, really the blended learning case started.
Yeah.
You're fresh.
Yeah, three fresh years, anyway, attached it.
So blended learning, the blended learning, actually the initiative started last year with our secondary math team, sixth through twelfth grade. And they actually attended some learning at Grantwood AEA last year, several sessions, I think the last session was cut short because of the situation. But each, the middle school and high school has participated, and actually Brian Woods at the time was supporting each of those teams to implement some of those, some of the strategies, begin to play with some of these, these basic ideas, incorporating technology with onsite learning. Well, as we got into this summer and started putting together our return to learn plan, part of the thought was, as students come onsite and in preparation for, okay, well, what if we would have to shut down school? And we need to still provide some of this learning for not just our secondary math team, but really preschool through twelfth grade teachers in preparation for online learning. And we really thought about this in terms of, okay, well, we really want to incorporate technology onsite while, while we're onsite, utilizing the devices that we currently have, which we're still trying to infuse, we're, we're still waiting for some technology to come in that was, that's been on the backorder to support K-12, iPads at the elementary level, and then Chromebooks at the secondary level, so that we can be able to utilize those within our classroom with the idea of blended learning. Especially so that our students know how to access Google Classroom, that they know how to access CSO, what that looks like, teachers starting to utilize those programs as students are actually quarantined. So it's not just a, an online thing, but it's a blended thing. So just a real quick summary from my notes, the, every Thursday of this month and into October, our middle school, high school, elementary, Lakeview and SIS are engaged with the National Presenter, Kathleen Tucker. She's nationally known for her work with blended learning, and they're engaging in this professional development. And these are just some of the topics and the conversation points that she's bringing to the table for, for our staff. Lakeview was the most recent one today for early release. So we've had high school, middle school, Lakeview, have had their first session, and then they'll have their second session this next program. Next Thursday, the twenty-fourth, she'll be working with high school again and following up with them for a two-hour session. Middle school on October first, and then Lakeview SIS again on October fifteenth. And really, she's really trying to tailor to the levels, it's not just the one size fits all today with Lakeview, they really talked about station rotation, best practice online, working with students, the amount of time that you have video versus, or synchronous learning versus asynchronous learning, both those types of things. But really, I think the crux of it is with this blended learning is the definition of a formal education program, in which a student learns at least in parts through online delivery of content and instruction with some element of students' control over time, place, path, and/or pace, and at least in part as a supervised brick and mortar location away from home. So, but we're trying to also incorporate this as an idea with, if we're to go online with students, and how, and how best practice would look in a blended learning environment, whether it's onsite or online.
Questions? So this started, you started this PD before the school year started, and you said you've been working on it since the spring.
Well, actually all last year with our math team, and then one of our PD days, half the day, the morning, I think it was our first, I think it was the, the twenty?
One of the workshop days.
Fourth, I think, the Monday, the morning, we kicked it off by an introduction from our Grantwood AEA team member, really giving an introduction to blended learning, and then that's where we launched into just different tools, different concepts, different ways in which we can start to incorporate technology. And then the blended learning with Kathleen Tucker is a follow-up to that, to really start to dig a little bit more deeply. She's really done a nice job of providing opportunities for actual CLT teams, so it's virtual, but CLT teams are all in the same room, so they can have discussion and talk about the tools that she's presented, and actually starting to sketch out some ideas of what it could look like if they were to start, if we were to start utilizing these, these structures in the classroom and preparing her online. So it's really, it's been really quite good, PD, we've been recording this session, so if you just could go back and look at certain aspects of it.
If you remember our action plan last year with our APR goals, we talked about that accelerated learning and that, and we were gonna pilot some things with the math department, grade six, twelve. This is some of the work that we are gonna have the math department do. But the pandemic created a sense of urgency, and so we had to move faster and expand it, like Josh said, outside the math department. So Tim, when you said, you've had PD on this before, yes, the math department was actually starting to engage in this work, we just had to expand it out all K-12.
That should be interesting for a few months to revisit this and see what this, how it's impacted us. You know, when we spend the money on a speaker, and so it's kind of good to know that we, you know, what, what the adoptions were, how it's going, I mean, and obviously you spread it, you know, but maybe after Christmas or whatever.
My hope, yeah, my hope is that as we're, as we're launching some of these things, and again, it's a shift, it's a, it's a whole mind shift in terms of instruction, maybe start to incorporate these ideas, but really, we'll have Kathleen, but then my goal is to utilize our Grantwood staff who have experience with, with this and working with other school districts, to follow, to help them, to have them follow up with us and generate some, maybe some other mini learning sessions to dig into some of the concepts, so that we can keep rolling with this. So it's not just all an event that we have over the course of September, October, but really that it will start to build momentum over time, and we start to see some changes in practice.
Good point, and we've got a team from the AEA, the digital learning team, we've already established the relationship with, they, we, we, we started meeting with them, and they were part of our return to learn plan. They will be able to provide, once Kathleen's work is done here, they'll come in and provide that ongoing support.
So looking beyond kind of the current year, where do we think long-term the biggest impacts, I mean, what, what student populations, what classes, what, something, something curious to think is that the, show the biggest impact in blended learning, where do we think?
I think my greatest hope would be all, because it would change the instructional pedagogy that's happening in the classroom, because really the blended learning is not, it's not just about technology. It's really creating an atmosphere where, where kids, and where they talk about that voice and choice, more personalized, giving kids an opportunity to potentially go at their own pace, trying something on their own. Working in smaller groups, they, Kathleen talks about station rotation, where, where kids are set up, where they're, where they're really exploring a concept in a, maybe in a small group. And it doesn't necessarily mean it's technology, the teacher is working with a small group of kids at the table, whether that's reteaching or introducing a concept or reinforcement concept. And this really could look, this, this could be a really impactful, especially at the secondary level, which that's not what the usual norm at the secondary level. And it'll look different in each classroom, but I think for the elementary level, it, it's a natural thing that they normally do, it's just thinking about it a little bit differently, so. I, I see it having an impact across the system, that's my greatest hopes.
Other questions? If not, thanks, Josh. Next up is focus on learning, about return to learn and mental health.
Yes, we invited the counselors, a big part of our return to learn plan was the mental health aspect as it's part of our strategic plan. So Advent team was talking a couple of weeks ago, our counselors are doing a wonderful job in, with implementing that plan, and we just want the counselors, we invited them to kind of update the board to make you aware of, you know, that whole return to learn and what that looks like from the mental health aspect, so I'm gonna turn it over to our counseling department.
So I, I have a printout, do you guys all want one of these? Do you guys want to keep it, take a look at it as we go through? I have one already.
You're ready to do it?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And there were five key components that we looked at with that return to learn plan, and that's kind of what we're gonna talk about today, is what, some of the things that we've already implemented, things that we're looking to implement as we continue through the school year. As safety has been the number one priority in returning back to school, so we've been taking a look at how does, how can we, with our social emotional impact of students being out of school, what can we do as they're coming back with all these mitigation procedures and try to make school feel like school for them? And so that's what we've been trying to do as counselors, and one of the things that we felt really important about was that first concept, that routines and communication, especially when we're looking at not knowing what the pandemic's gonna act like once we all come back together, it's important that we establish these routines in the classrooms, so that if there is a component where we're going online, the students know what the clear expectations are. We've established, and that kind of goes into this next step, these relationships between teachers and classmates, so that this is a, it, it becomes, if we do go online, it's not a hard switch for them, that we're able to be able to keep those, the learning continued if we're going to that environment.
Yep, and I would say something that we have gone to time with last year, is last year we had the implementation of the DESA, which was our social emotional learning screener for students, and so kind of building off of that, keeping the momentum of that going, knowing full well that we did not have time to do the last assessment to really see the progress from our interventions with the school year being cut in person short. And so we went along, we were missing that data piece, and so really trying to get that back on the calendars so that we can start looking at where students are, where the areas of growth are. And with the change of mitigation strategies, trying to figure out how can teachers, you know, naturally build this into their day, so it doesn't become just another thing, but schedule intentional time for that, so like that, they go on a training, I work at Lakeview Elementary, and at SIS, having morning meetings where staff can talk with their students, kind of do something as formal as a fist-to-five for kids to rate how they're feeling that day, all the way to doing things like zones of regulation or a question of the day, kind of gets, meet students where they're at. Because what we know is if a student is not feeling socially, emotionally, or mentally well, their engagement at school is gonna be far less, their wellness overall is gonna be far less, you're gonna start seeing more psychosomatic symptoms, kids feeling sick, wanting to go home. And so really trying to get ahead of that rather than acting reactively. And so things that we're looking to maybe implement would be something like closed gap, and this is a recommendation as well that came for, we partnered with an organization called Please Pass the Love, and they provided some training for staff, because what we've learned from some assessment data from Please Pass the Love is that staff are wanting more, a better understanding of what mental health means, especially in a school setting, and so Please Pass the Love was not only able to help us figure out the data that we have, but also action planning steps, and provide a mental health first aid training for staff, so we can identify some common mental health concerns, what are ways that teachers can really help that part of student development, and then even a big focus on staff self-care, because I feel like we have staff that are feeling, we need to get students academically back where they need to be, and reminding staff that you need to take time for yourself, because your stress is gonna link into the students and into the community, and for everything to run well, you need to make sure you take time for yourself, so that you can be fully present, not put too much pressure on yourself, because then kids are not gonna end up performing, we'll see a spike in problem behaviors, which also kind of builds into the sense of safety. And then connectedness, something that we kind of piloted a little bit at Lakeview Elementary, is this thing, teacher-to-teacher kind of peer groups, building those relationships with staff, so that way they're looking out for each other rather than being, our departmentalized, you know, giving time for staff to connect, to look after each other, and even, you know, form that connection, because we don't want our staff to burn out, we burn out, we're gonna have higher staff turnover, and you know, it's gonna be harder for our students to be successful in those environments, so intentionally building at times for staff to connect to each other on a social relational, to build kind of strength in the school culture, especially since at Lakeview we have changed in administration. So I feel like right now is more important than ever to make sure that we strengthen our relationships in the school, to better our school climate.
And I would say, I'd like to speak, I mean, SIS has been doing this morning meeting concept, and they're, they've become really good at it, and they're even getting better. But it's all about that relationship building and providing that sense of safety there for students to be able to get to know their teachers. And especially at the middle school, they implemented it this year, it's with that cohort concept, those students are traveling with this group all day long. So really giving them an opportunity to get to know each other and share, and especially giving them a platform to be able to share about some of the things that they've experienced. I mean, the pandemic, if there's talking points, giving them a forum at the school in a safe environment to be able to share with their peers and discuss that with your teachers. So I feel like that has been a very positive thing, and they formulated to follow sort of a guideline, that question of the day aligns with our DESA assessment. They're doing some self-awareness questions, so students are doing, talking about topics that are about self-awareness. They're learning about, what does it mean to be confident, what does it mean to know how I feel about today, and talk about how I feel today, in a very, in a close environment for them to be able to get to know their teacher and be able to share with one another. And those, those questions, that we, those are things that we assess on the DESA, so they're also getting that implemented by their classroom teacher for a discussion topic, so that we're able to come in and reinforce their practice.
I'm gonna be kind of talking, and I think you wanted to add one, and this is Mike, he's also.
Yeah, he's also, we just talk a lot, so.
What I could add is, like, the blended learning, the mental health piece really got accelerated, right? Because we had some PD plans where this peace but, Please Pass the Love this year, we had mental health in our district, got accelerated, but it's, you know, not just for our students, like Heather and Megan were saying, it's also for, for our staff, and our families as well, right, we're trying to collect that data through these whole things, like, how you doing, how's, you know, how can we assist you, and all those things, so it's collectively all of us, right? So, you know, then at the high school, there was emphasis with Zach and the teachers about, you know, developing those relationships and getting to know students, and so, like today, for example, with this good discussion about, so we're on our alternative modified schedule, should we stick with that at the end of our first one-half week term, or should we move to our other two classes and, you know, so the teachers have that discussion? I'm just getting to know these kids, right? Let's stay with it, so I can know them better. At the high school, delivering, you know, any type of SEL content is a little bit more challenging, first of all, there's not a lot of curriculum out there for teenagers, young adolescents. So, and starting on Monday, we're going to look at self-awareness, we'll be delivering some lessons to the students, beginning to give them to identify emotions and how it impacts their lives, et cetera, et cetera, so, yeah. A lot going on, a lot of, I don't know.
I think the initial, some of the initial contact we've had with classrooms is really about letting students know what we do, how we can help support them, and how they can get in touch with us if they need us, and communicating that to families as well, to reach out to us if there's a way we can support them or their families. And just making sure that they know that that establishment is there, that we're here to help support them in any way.
Yeah, and I would say that last year, leading into this year, I really advocated for weekly guidance lessons at Lakeview Elementary. So I'm offering that to every grade every week, which is really great, because I feel like that's when the brain's really developing, taking on those skills. So we focus a lot on self-regulation right now, we use a curriculum called Second Step, and that aligns with the form of the DESA that we can use, so that way we're very intentional about teaching the skills, it's like with academics, with reading, writing, or math, you have assessments, you have a tier-one delivery. So my tier-one delivery this year, I feel like I have more access to students, so I can be doing those check-ins, I can help the regulation. We can learn the skills that help you be a successful learner, and just all around, like, kind of helping the whole student. And so I would say next steps for the counseling department, would probably finding a consistent check-in on wellness, so something that Please Pass the Love had mentioned, that a lot of staff were interested in something called closed gap, so that would just be like an electronic way to check in with students, not only do you, it works on emotion identification, how am I feeling, how do I know, what are my bodily symptoms, and what is something that I can do to kind of cope with that? Also, setting on the calendar DESA assessment, so that way we can make sure that we have that data, and we can start looking at, how do we need to change the MTSS system this year so that students are receiving tier-one with fidelity, making sure that it's being reinforced, and then what's tier-two gonna look like this year if we have to be more mindful of mitigation strategies and not cross, I don't know, I don't call it cross-contaminating, but it kind of feels like that, you know? Yeah, and so something like that, the follow-up on a Please Pass the Love, we'll drag another one on the calendar, the DESA assessment back on the calendar, and then really making sure that in the event that maybe we would need to have a blended, a hybrid model or an online model, giving families tools that they will need to either access mental health or help to kind of alleviate some stress within that house in the event of a virtual or hybrid setting.
Questions?
What have you kind of seen, I guess, for like a few weeks, what's kind of the biggest change from past years to this year, what are you noticing with kids that's different?
I'm gonna tell you, kids are very resilient, and we're blessed that they, they come to school and they're happy to be at school. There is a level of anxiety because there's change and it's different, and, and do kids want us to return to normal, yes, as much as adults do. So there are some kids that have struggled just with that cohort concept of things not being able to do with their friends and those types of things, so it kind of goes against all things that school counselors. So it's been hard for us, because that, we want them to mingle, we want them to know each other, yes, no. We've seen with the first case at the middle, well, at one of the schools, there was a couple of cases, sorry, but there, there were. And those, that causes some anxiety. And, and so, you know, my sister's friend knows somebody that has COVID, what does that mean for me? And, and those kids reaching out, because they're, they're nervous about that, it's just uncertainty for them, so that's some of the things that I have seen with, with kids.
I would say that what I've seen at the elementary level is a lot harder time, parents and students separating before school, because they had, what, five months together, living, breathing, only at home, so going from a very unstructured environment to a more structured environment is even a harder challenge this year, which is why I think that we really want to make sure that we're strengthening our tier-one intervention, because classroom management more than ever is gonna be pushed to its limits, because these kids have had so much access to family, to freedom, to what they enjoy doing, to less workload. So that's a huge adjustment, and I think it's giving more kids anxiety, and we're seeing, and this isn't so unusual, but kids feeling nauseous, you know, and with COVID, they, the first thing is, oh my gosh, they have COVID, no, a lot of it, like I said, is psychosomatic, so they start feeling sick to their stomach, or feeling like, I don't want to go to school, I'm not feeling well, not being able to identify that that's anxiety versus illness.
We work very closely with the nurses.
Yes, we do, so that's something I've always seen.
For me, what I see, probably the way I address these questions, right, it's not so much the anxiety, it's this sense of loss, right? These juniors, as they transition to their senior year, they've got a picture in their mind, what it should look like. You know, that they want, you know, Mr. Wider grabs the hammer, it's like, we can't have you just in the building hanging out, we don't want you here early. Like, it was against everything we want, as a building is a safe place for students to come, and things like that, and so it's like, you know, how's it going? That's, it's just different, and it's really hard for them to identify what the difference is other than, it's not the way I pictured it to be. So, but everything else, you know, you're still in class, and it's face-to-face, and some students still in college classes, but it's not how they picture it right now, so.
I think the big thing with that is just giving them the forum to be able to talk about that, and be able to talk about, when we talk about locus of control, we talk about our feelings, let's put it in a framework. We're at school, what can we do, what can we do in this situation to make it a positive situation for them?
That's good, so, I was glad to hear another video you talked about, you know, making sure that they understand that you're assessable, what you do, but, but also how important it is that your role isn't shifting, but your role with the teachers is shifted, because not, you're still working with them, but now also you can work for them.
Right.
And that's, that's an element of our, of our population here, staffing, that we would have never thought, the counselors would have had much to do with, and that's terrific, that you're reaching out to them and making sure that they're aware of your services and what you can do. I know Natalie and Davis sent out our EAP information, so the staff has that, but this is an in-house face-to-face thing, it's terrific for you guys.
Just about, you and I, Brett, you were there, we sat in that health and wellness meeting two years ago, we talked about mental health, and I just see how blessed we were to be already so prepared, and we weren't prepared for this, obviously, but we had a lot of tools in place to use and be ready for this. And I think just you guys are doing a great job, and, you know, it's gonna be a challenging year for everybody, it's gonna be challenging for you guys too. But I appreciate the administration kind of jumping on this, and us, you know, I don't want to say we're having a bird, but we had things in place to help kids, and I do really appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah, and just another shout-out to our counselors, because we, I mean, our return to learn, you know, has the five different silos, the five different, and we handed them the mental health, and Josh will tell you, you three just ran with it, and we appreciate that, because it allowed us then to focus on some other things that we needed to focus on, so, thank you, and.
Are there, are there other areas, as, as you look at the year, and obviously we're only a few weeks in, are there other areas that you should, you should be looking out for, that maybe other resources you need to make available? As we, as we think about what the year might look like, how are we doing, and what other resources might you need from us that you'd like to be able to see what we can do?
Right now, Tim, as far as resources we might need, you know, that's, that's not a discussion we have had, we have discussed, talked about the DESA though. And we know, we know the commitment to the DESA program, and yet, last year, in the spring, that kind of wrecked another assessment, another way to utilize that, that resource, and find out, okay, how can we best utilize that, is it telling us, giving us what we need to improve how we work with students? And then moving forward this year, there's, yeah, well, what does that look like if?
It's an atypical year, so we give an assessment in that format, will it really need?
Going to get a sense of what that tool is, and how to best utilize it this year even. Get a sense of what that tool is and how to best utilize it this year even. So that's just like, okay, is he going to have that as a tool? So that's constantly discussed. We understand that, but like, yeah, we're going to get a great picture of what that means.
I would really like to plug for continuing the DESSA. I feel like last year, we didn't get to see the whole potential of it. So giving it this year to really reteach staff about what it looks like, what it means. Giving us time to make sense of the data that's available, giving us another year to see what interventions we can point to place. And then really seeing the impact of it. Because if we, and I don't know what the decision's going to be, but in my head, I imagine it is a process that's going to have to roll out. Because we're not, I don't think we're going to see immediate results. Because we're going to have to really find out where our data is, how we can move that in a more positive way. And that's going to take some time. Because there's only three of us, so the more we can help support teachers and have them help with social, emotional learning, the stronger that's going to be. But this program is, you know, I feel like academics are always years ahead of where mental health is. You know, it's still such a stiff line some places. So I feel like we're a little bit behind just as a, a focus in general. So I feel like if we keep this as a priority in the district, then it will really help show the community that this is something that's not going away. This is something that will affect the student through their whole life and career.
It was really positive, I think, as we started looking at the DESSA. We really started, um, as far as the staff introducing that this was something, social, emotional skills are teachable, right? Just like any skill, we can teach those skills, so we should be able to assess those skills. Just like a math assessment and those types of things. So it really brought that to the table, that we were all with the academics as well, being able to do that. We value what, how we're doing and where we need to put our emphasis on. Um, so I think it really, and, and we treated it that way as far as when we, you know, sent out a letter. Hey, this child is going to be in a reading group. We would say, your child is going to be in this group. And it was just the same as an academic.
Yep, normalizing.
To normalize that mental health piece.
So I guess I'm thankful that we're even invited to this board meeting, right? So plug for it. I mean, I think that's a huge win for us, so.
Yeah, I think a lot of times, you know, we focus on the academics, a lot of the nurses and what counselors. It just kind of gets moved in the background. Because as long as everything's going good on the surface, no one sees how hard you guys are paddling underneath to keep things moving that way. And so, um, you know, with Davis' suggestion, you guys coming up, it's that, I think, you know, we were happy to hear from you. Mental health has been a big push that we've been trying to get, get going. And so I think it'll be hard to make any decisions based on things that happen from March through, through, through this year.
Yeah, a little racism we need right now.
All we can do is keep pushing forward and try and make assessments afterwards. What can we learn from this? What, what can we do if it doesn't work? Obviously, as you said, it becomes an interesting question this year. How useful can it be in terms of looking at what we're encountering? And can it help us figure out what we need to do for this year and moving forward to better position ourselves? The last little question I had, I know that it was referenced up here, it's kind of the at-risk kids. And I know that, uh, you know, this is going to go more than Heather. Because I know at the high school, we've got resources with Jake Muntz who works out with kids that are, are kind of, have, are working through some things. And so, um, middle school is always that perfect time as, as kids are finding themselves. And so what are, what are your, what are your thoughts, you know? Is there anything special that we're looking at at that middle school building? As we're going through all the stuff with COVID and anything special we need to worry about there? Do we have everything we need?
I mean, to be honest with that situation, I typically, um, the uniqueness of Jake's position is I think he focuses on that academic piece. Um, in a, in a big sense, and Mike kind of has that mental health piece. So they're very separate. So at the middle school, it's me. And then our intervention team is where we work through those sort of processes as students come to attention. So, um, as far as my, um, typically for me, just to be honest, the academic typically falls below the need for mental health. Just because the mental health seems to come as, at a more of an urgent situation. Um, so do I address the intervention for academics? Absolutely. When we take it with some of the data for students. But typically that's addressed through our intervention team when students come to teacher referral. Yeah.
Does that answer?
It does.
Okay. And with J-FAS, I feel like they've been a real lifesaver for students that are in crisis.
You got, you remember J-FAS?
Yeah, I should have put that on. Yeah, we were just talking about J-FAS.
Yeah, J-FAS services are.
And that's that consortium that we entered into for those more, uh, would you say tier two, three or tier three?
I would say it's more for three.
Tier three, the more intense needs, yeah.
To provide that assessment and really that case management piece for families. Because navigating that is not an easy thing. So that whole case management, having somebody who is in the field, be able to do that for our families is huge.
Thank you, Heather, Mike, thanks.
Thank you.
Next up is board committee updates. No, we'll start with you.
Start with me?
We'll start with you.
And then with me?
Uh, no, I have one more.
I do have a couple of things on some of these stuff, so. Some of, some of you may know, some of you may not, doesn't matter. But the, the city is going to have a, have a work session sometime in the next, just all about the community center. I'm not going to make any assumptions, but all we hope is that after the first session, they reach out to us and have a conversation. And then we'll be in touch as to what their plan is. I have no idea. I don't think it gets. Um, along those same lines, um, next week, Davis, Brian and I are going to spend some time just kind of looking around this property. Um, kind of trying to figure out next steps in the event that something changes, whether it does or doesn't. Um, and then also last Thursday, Dan and Davis and I met with a representative from baseball parents. They refer to themselves as baseball parents, asking about the possibility of making some improvements at Paul Ryan. Um, in combination with some of the wind damage and some other things that have been addressed the last couple of years. And this isn't new. This is something that's been on the table for a couple of years. And so, um, we're waiting to hear back from them. They're going to try to get a phase plan put together. Um, and we'll be visiting with you guys about if and when and how. I already checked with the city to make sure that they understand the opportunity down there. So that's all fine. So I think we're in good shape that way, but just so you know, there's some stuff going on. And then at some point, probably next year, we'll be talking again about DESSA as well.
That's good, yep. And then the other committee updates? Adam and I, I think we talked about the last one, we talked about getting together with negotiations team. And I reached out to Carrie and Mark and we're going to try and get together and just have an informal get-together here, uh, later. At least in the last, once things get settled inside, I think, probably later in October, uh, once things get settled a little bit, so. So that's on the, on the horizon now, so. That's all we've got for committee updates. Consent agenda. Anything needed to be pulled off? If not, only can motion to approve the consent agenda. So, motion by Coons. Second by Alaska. All of them in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved unanimously. PSYAC membership, it's that time of year, guys and gals, we got to approve the appointments through the PSYAC committee. So as you guys recall, PSYAC is the School Improvement Advisory Committee. Davis has, although they kept, they, they keep these categories, you don't have to go up the top. The law says that we've got to have categories, we've got to have representation. And Davis has kept track of this. And so this year I asked him to just stick it all on there so we can see what, which, which boxes everyone checks. So that's why it looks a little bit different than last year where you just have the names and the years. So, um, we're trying to provide some balance across those different groups. And so, uh, those with 2022 year would be the new appointees. The ones with 2021 are ones that are who were appointed last year, so that's a two-year appointment, so. Questions? And we do know our students this year. So last year, I think we approved it, we didn't know the students yet. So it looks like some of them have been jabbed.
We meet three times a year and we're just going to schedule the first one virtual. And then we'll determine, hopefully, we can start to normalize by February, but we'll see where we're at. So if that's the case, we've scheduled the CFA lobby, we got to get that reserved way ahead of time, otherwise we won't have it. And if we need to move it to virtual, we will. First meeting, we usually go over, um, the purpose of the, the PSYAC committee. Which, you know, we talk about being a liaison to the community, um, a critical friend as we present things to, get the feedback. You can see there's quite a, quite a diversity, business, industry, higher ed, um, agencies, uh, staff members, administrators, parents, community members. So we've got a, a broad perspective there, um, as far as feedback. And then, um, you, in February, we typically, um, bring in, um, a, a diverse group of six, 12 students. And we do a focus, a focus group, a large focus group, usually anywhere from 25 to 30 students, grade six, 12. I have, um, um, Mike and Zach, um, working on getting a very diverse group. Those students that we know are going four-year college track, those students that may not. Those students with IEPs, those students that are, are gifted, those students, you know, just out in the fine arts, out for sports, just out for nothing. Just a, a good group. I think, uh, Jamie, you were a part of that last year. Uh, we've got a set of questions that we ask the same questions every year. We collect feedbacks that we have long data, trend line data as far as, uh, how we're doing as a system. And, and, uh, you know, through their lens and through their eyes. So that's always a, a very good meeting in February. And then May, we basically present, you know, here are APR goals, this was our priorities, this is the data, this is the progress we made. And then we get their feedback and recommendations on, are these the right goals? And, and then that's when we bring those to you in August and, and, uh, read off, so, or make those changes.
Make motion to approve the appointments to the PSYAC. Motion by Dale Lookup. Second by Wolf, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The next one's going to take some work. We were not, well, we were not more modified, well, nevermind, I'm, I'm.
You got a head, Chris.
I'm already on number three. Okay, number two won't take much more. As per normal, uh, Davis will tell us that we spent more money than we brought in in revenue.
Two hundred and eighty-nine thousand.
Which is, which is not horrible.
We were, five years ago, about six hundred thousand. So, um, we've slowly, slowly trickled that down. This is, and if you look at, uh, Josh, you have a closer percent of districts across Iowa that run a deficit in special education. Oh, ninety-nine point nine, I think there, I think what they said last year, there were like four that didn't run a deficit. Of the three hundred and forty school districts, only four didn't run a deficit. You know, this is where we get additional funding, um, to implement IEPs, um, with students that are identified federally. And, um, it's the amount of, of resources that we put into those students, uh, the funding is not enough. And so we go ahead and spend what it takes, what we need to, and that's our deficit. And so we need, what, what we basically give in the general fund for this.
How much can we put away over the years, John? Pretty close to that, right?
We, yeah, we, when we budget, we cushion enough to know, yes, that we're going to be over.
Yeah, we brought it down a lot. I remember it was six hundred dollars.
Why would there be variation that far, that whole two, five years?
What now? Someone was wanting your feedback, right?
Yeah, so someone was, someone was the Medicaid reimbursement, I found for that. And others has just done, if I recall, some of the stuff on scheduling, which is, you know, it means a half an associate and carrying, you know, having them paired up so they're in the same class at the same time. So there's, there's.
Being more efficient with scheduling. You're right, Medicaid, Medicaid funding has been huge for us, getting that reimbursement.
Is this still pretty delayed on that?
Yes.
So, and, and the big struggle here, you know, we, we go to ISB and we, this is always a big topic. It does, the federal government has never fully funded what they've promised the states for their portion of special ed. So all these special ed deficits really fall on that, largely fall on that piece that the federal government promised that they were going to pick off, that they'd never fully funded. And the state is better, it's, it's not fully funded in their piece either, but it's a lot better than the federal government is, so. So I need a motion to approve the, so again, this, this will not get us any more money for it.
We're just approving the deficit.
Well, you know, we're proving this, getting a lot, we're, we're proving getting a lot of, we've got the spending authority back. So we've already spent the money. And what we're asking for is to increase, increase our spending authority to collect that money. So that means that we've got the, the money available in the future. We've, we've got the authority to spend money in the future, uh, for this chunk of change. And so, and so I'll make motion to approve the modified law for the special education deficit in the amount of two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars and forty bucks. Also, the motion by Dale, that's a second by Alaska. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, now we get to move on to the one that's going to take some more discussion. So we've got our legislative priorities for next year. And so you guys all got the, the packet from, from ISB on the ones that they're suggesting. And we, here are the tallies already. Let's not be too close. And there's a four. Oh, and then to get the other two, there is no, none of them have more than two.
Interesting. I thought it'd be pretty close.
Well, well, obviously.
I thought this year though.
There was more.
There was way.
Yeah, there was more choices.
Yeah. And some of them on this side, yeah, I want this, I'm already doing this.
So the ones we've got, so, as I printed everything off and now I'm like, oh, wait.
But listen to those videos like we did, a lot of them pop and knock up, they, they just keep kicking that can down the road every year.
Well, it's good to know that the legislature thinks that we don't deserve local control.
We have two of the, two of the four, like, everybody voting for, and then.
You got a graph or is it just your talent?
Yeah, he has a graph.
I do have a graph.
Yes.
Right, so that was always the one we all. Chris, these aren't lined up for me. Apparently this is why it's going to take a while. I'm ready. Come on, my, my twenty-six doesn't, the twenty-six on here doesn't match the twenty-six in here. So Chris, I have the twenty-six in here, local accountability and decision-making and you have unfunded.
Sure, open up the, open up the thing I gave you, the blue folder.
Yep.
Let's get everybody's numbers on it.
Yep.
So maybe we can decipher.
No, I think the numbers on the sheet are correct, but the problem is the numbers on the sheet aren't matching the names. Does that make sense? So I have, okay, so we're going to, I'm going to assume the numbers are right and I'm going to go off the numbers in here. So what I have is number twenty-six is local accountability and decision-making was the unanimous one. Is that, is that match with what everyone had? Okay. The number twenty-six, we've got everyone agreeing on. The next one up is, is number seven, which I believe is mental health.
But Dan didn't vote for that.
Yeah, that's, that's four.
No, I'm just saying, but what I'm saying is I don't have them marked out for that one. I have that one blanked, so.
I just felt like we were, you know, I could put my vote elsewhere.
No, it's fine. I just wanted to make sure.
And that's the other issue, it's what ISB is going to.
If you look at the stuff, what ISB is concerned on the mental health side is about the fact that what they're worried about is that they're going to take money from one spot to another spot and it's going to be the zero-sum game. And so they're going to take more money from the outside mental health and move it to school mental health and say, look, we're giving you money. But then what we're doing is they're giving us money to do stuff and they're taking it away from the, that level, the adults and the level, you know, the, the more, so.
I just want to make sure I maybe took your numbers and put them in their own spot. That's mine, that's why.
So the ones that have two are number four, which is early literacy. And number twelve, which is teacher leadership and development. And then number nineteen, which is school funding policy. No supplemental statement?
No.
Yes. In the, in the.
Oh, okay, so. Oh, okay, so, okay.
Yeah, so that was. Yeah, so we got off somewhere there, so that's.
Okay.
So, which is fine, so those are the ones we've got, supplemental state aid. Mental health and early literacy, so. We've got a summary, no other ones in here, in here, we want to dig into the.
So yeah, how many, we get four?
We have four. Two out of the three. We have to reach consensus. So.
Well, we've heard the question, the early child literacy, I mean, that's a great priority here.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, and, and you know, that, that, part of that early, early literacy funds are summer school, which, you know, we bring you that data, it's been very effective.
Doesn't have anything to do just the crossover with preschool, you know what I mean, as far as the early literacy stuff?
It's K three. Early literacy is considered K three though.
Yeah, and ISB considers it pre-K two, so. So it's really about literacy, teacher leadership, and then supplemental state aid. Yeah, I think we can have, we can have supplemental state aid as a priority every year for ISB. And sometimes it's like.
That will get to early literacy.
Yeah.
Supplemental state aid will.
Yeah, so last year, the four, the four, the four that the state came up with as their priorities were preschool, mental health, school funding policy, and supplemental state aid.
So we get local control, mental health, early literacy. And then teacher leadership. Is that what we got?
No, we have, well, we have.
No, I'm saying for, for right now.
Yep, what we have right now is supplemental state aid and. Mental health are our top two. And then beyond that, we've got early literacy, teacher leadership development for, and supplemental state aid. Local's the one that.
I thought it was four.
Yeah, so we have local, which we all voted for.
Yeah, and then we've got mental health.
Mental health and, no, the ones that everyone voted for, supplemental state aid. No.
Local.
Local, yes.
Yeah.
So if we do local control, mental health. Supplemental state aid. And then we gotta decide between early literacy and is it teacher?
And I have some questions, do, do prioritize, as far as. Do prioritize supplemental state aid at the, at the local level, knowing that it's gonna be a rough year and everyone's gonna have, I guess, for instance, everyone's gonna have that one down. And I think. I think the local control is obviously important one, and the mental health are important. Where do we, where do we want our representative to be, the, the virtual delegation to advocate for most?
Where, where's the, where's the vote gonna be most well-used when we get there? Where the other districts gonna be looking at it, it's gonna help our support.
Is Bobby coming through here in the next, what would you do?
So yeah, Bob, so we'll, we'll do our invites to the legislators here later in the year. So we'll, we'll hit on our four priorities to, to them when they come in. So we normally do that later in November, so that'll be our November board meeting, it'll generally be a week that.
There's the election, yeah.
Yeah, but elections at the beginning of the month, so.
So it'll be whoever wins.
Yeah, so it would be Zach and then whoever, whoever wins the, the house race would be who we have, yeah, so.
So, I mean, does anybody have a feel for what might be? A stronger movement statewide than the early literacy or is it teacher leadership?
Well, having been in these things, early literacy doesn't get much traction. It's just, bigger districts are more worried about preschool. They want, they want preschool to get out of the, the three year olds. They want, they want, they want to extend preschool down even for you, that's what the big districts are pushing for. Cause they want, they want the earlier opportunities to work with kids. And so that, that's a big push and it's why, why it could be one of the priorities is they, they wanna, they wanna expand that. That program, so that's, that's, that's kind of been the big push these days. You know, as, as I look at the, you know, teacher leadership, although we, we do a lot with it and we, very valuable, I think a lot of people kind of said that's kind of. At least when you go to the state level, it's cause that's, we're doing that. There's, there's bigger fish to fry, so. If I had, if I had to choose between the two, I. For, for district standpoint, I think. We probably, we probably would want more for the teacher leadership and development from the state level. The early literacy, I think we're doing enough on our own to push that forward. And other, other places in the state that are not doing as much as we're doing on that, so. If I was pushing for it, I'd do supplemental state aid and the teacher leadership development, that's the next two.
I'd agree with that.
Yeah, that's good.
I'd love to see if you didn't bang your drop, but I don't want to fall on that bear, so focus on something where you think you're in a good direction.
Right.
Yeah, and again, ours, our, initially our votes will go into everybody else's and they will. They'll then tally the votes, what they think the priorities are based on, cause they'll look through that separation, so it could be three or four and they. And they look at the top three or four and see what the, where that separation occurs and then they bring it to a vote before the whole delegation, so.
And, and I know each of you know the impact that the teacher leadership has on early childhood reading. And we've had Jen here, Amy was here last year, the kindergarten team was last year, so. Yeah, that's a good priority.
Okay, so.
Seven?
So what I'm hearing is that we're gonna have. Twelve, seven, twelve, nineteen, and twenty-six. Which, which is mental health, teacher leadership, supplemental state aid, and local control.
So I can submit those tomorrow after we put them in.
Yes.
So make motion to approve seven, twelve, nineteen, twenty-six.
Yes. Motion by Alaska, second by Coons. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up is first reading of board policies related to supplemental. Dan and Jamie.
I can't say what we did was we took what they talked about last board meeting and then I contacted Dan. And we made, Davis made the, and Jamie, and made the changes. And then sent it to them to make sure they felt comfortable and know we've attached it as the first.
So what we did based upon last month's discussion, we took those suggestions, we revised, well, we, we made sure that was inserted into the policy. And then we sat down with Sean Seaton, our director of technology, and Casey as activities director. And we walked them through this and. Got them familiar with it, clarified with it, basically said, this is a direction we're going to go. Place on hold until we go back to the board today, further discuss, he will wrap it in. As Casey's already informed the coaches that something like this is coming. You can see, since coming to, if you wanna follow, you know, our activities, you go to, I think right now, at Halfman, something like that. He's already put out a, a new, new page to all of his followers, it's now at Solen Director. So shifting those things, and so what we're, what we're going to do, just to recap that, is. Any social media type account, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, whatever else is out there, if it's associated with Solen. Uses our logo, uses our school, then we, we, the school district will become owners. And what we'll do is we'll grant rights to those individuals to use. So at Solen Football, we will take ownership of that account. But we'll hand all the rights to feed it, to use it, to communicate on it, to the football coach. And that, as we discussed, will protect our employees from anything frivolous, copyright, or. Criticism or such, and we can better oversee it since it is representing Solen. All, all of this policy comes rec, the, the language in it is recommended by Iowa School Board Association. And the law firm that we use out of the one.
This is the first reading, I'll have to second.
And, and just, just to note, we did have part of this policy in the six hundred series, we moved it all to the four hundred series.
So we just got control over those, you know, like for Solen Football. How many people have access or rights to that?
Not sure. We didn't create it, we don't own it, but this board policy will basically move things to where we become the owners. And then, you know, for instance, if you follow wrestling in the winter. That Twitter wrestling feed really gives up to date on Saturday when they're in Eagle Grove, you know, four hours away, you wanna follow all the matches. I mean, that Twitter feed is going all day long, giving you updates. I think, well, Blake Williams has a student manager. You know, feeding that for the community. Well, Blake will be able, will be able to, you know, through permission, give that student manager. Through Blake, you know, the wrestling coach's permission.
Who was your heir this year, right?
Yeah, yeah. So.
Probably just permission to have somebody else do.
Yes, and more than one person can have permission.
Right.
For instance, our at Solen CSD Twitter account, I have access, Josh has access, Casey has access. Our principals have access to that, so when that, when a Twitter feed comes out on at Solen CSD, it could be any one of us feeding that.
And I'm sure this was by advice, but it says employees are encouraged to grade schools, school specific media addresses. It's not required, which is fine. I just, that's my only.
Are, are you looking at this one for fifteen?
Yes, fifteen point two.
Point two?
Yeah, it says advice for use of social media in employees' personal life. So just that they don't have to make one, but if they, for the school board, they do.
Yes, they're not required to.
What Davis did with the ISB and we had another school that said out, basically it was the language he compared it on, they just kind of maneuvered into their language. So really, everything looked at with all ISB stuff.
Okay.
Which is a great guideline, that's what you guys have been going through the last couple of years, is to use their language as much as possible to be consistent.
I just think at the end of the day, it protects them.
Yeah, for sure.
Even for those that follow, it just gets easier that way to know where to go.
I don't remember where I was at the session, was it last year before ISB, and they talked about just. Social media has changed a lot from ten years ago, fifteen years ago, people started using it. And from a district standpoint, there's a continuity, which is, you know, you know, people don't say forever. And so, you know, if you've got, if it belongs to a person and they leave, then all of a sudden, it's, it's gone with them. And so if it's district owned, then it, it creates continuity, so. You know, you'll know today, you'll know a year from now, even five years from now, it's the same, you have activities director is gonna be the same account. Just like the at CSD on Twitter, it's gonna be the same account. And so you don't have to go figure out, who do I need to follow now? This coach left, so now where do I go to find out what's going on here? And so you just, you can follow on that, I think that's, that's one of the biggest issues. And the other issue is, and not that you expect it to be problems, but you know, you know, by having district control, if, if somebody does top off. And, you know, he gets hacked or whatever, Sean can get in and he can start cleaning things up and not have to worry about, you know. Who has access to it, but who has access to it and trying to check, or trying to check, you know, if it's a, it's an individual account, then you gotta try to, you know, who owns this account, you know. It, it's just.
You, you remember as far as protecting our employees too. Three, four years ago, when an employee with a Twitter account that was using Solen, at, Solen Activity that we have. Created a, a Twitter account for that activity, innocently retweeted a quote. From a book in nineteen that was written in the seventies. And that author tracked it down. And sued, sued that for copyright infringement. And, I mean, that, that employee could have been held liable out of his own pocket. But we, we took that as a district and, and resolved that. But listen, who knows in the future, and so we wanna protect our employees from frivolous stuff like that also.
So to be for this, those.
Well, and I think on top of being able to protect them, if it's, if, if it's owned by us, then. We can enforce the guidelines that we're expecting them to follow too, so they can't just really, really do whatever they want. We, they're, we're also giving them these parameters that you are allowed to do. You know, allowed to post and stuff, so that protects us a little bit too.
And that's a good point.
And the separation of personal and.
Yeah, I think that's, that's an important piece, that we can separate personal from professional. And it does allow us to. To make sure, to educate the, the staff, as, as they're saying, I wanna do this, then Sean can sit down, so these are the do's and don'ts, yeah. Any, the motion to approve the first reading? So who, motion by Coons? Second by Wolf. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Informational items.
Yeah, just briefly, I wanna talk, just mention the fact that, as I mentioned earlier, we've had. Strong success in our return to onsite learning. We've, in, in the first, you know, thirteen, fourteen days, we've made adjustments to our plan as we knew we have, we tightened some things up. After our first positive case, because of the things that our principals had in place, the number of students that needed quarantine was minimum. And even from that, through conversation with Johnson County Public Health, we've learned a few things to tweak some things to where we could minimize it even more. And so we continue to make adjustments, it's been highly successful return. With, and the fact that, you know, we've had four positive cases, but no cases have. Infected others in the school day, we, we protected any contamination. Online, and I know you've been getting emails from some of the online headaches. I think Josh probably spent, I'd say fifteen hours in Zoom sessions with Edmonton officials just last week. Resolved a lot of things, so I'm gonna let Josh just give you a brief update on the online. Where we're at.
So I thought I'd just be real quick is, trying to keep, trying to keep this brief. With the, with the Edmonton online option, obviously I used to live eight decks, I think we have fifteen students currently taking advantage of that. But Edmonton is a much larger challenge because we're going with an outside vendor and relying on their expertise. And technology to help support our families and their service. So currently our participation numbers at K five are fifty, I think that actually changed the, just before the board member, our board meeting. Probably just below fifty now. But as you can see, eight kindergarten students currently, seven first grade, eleven second grade, seven third grade. Five fourth grade, twelve fifth grade.
And Josh, that fifty is changing because you, the deadline's been extended.
The, the deadline extended it today to next Wednesday because I did come out with an announcement that. After a great deal of just hours and hours spent talking with Edmonton and phone calls with parents and. I brought away three hundred emails between parents and myself and, and others. calls with parents and I brought away 300 emails between parents and myself and others, gathering feedback, kind of watching the trends with Edmonton and its use. Really, our biggest issue was at K5, the Calvert Learning Platform. 6-8 was, come to find out, was fairly smooth. I offered, I offered a couple of Zoom sessions for parents at six o'clock the last couple of nights. I had a handful jump on. Tuesday night, there was some, just basic, hey, these are just some glitches, this would be nice if they could change this or revise these. And then, really, the information was it went quite smooth for 6-8. The curriculum was challenging, extremely challenging, but parents are figuring out how they want to do that. And then, but K5, that's where we're through. Still some glitches, but today was a huge win for us, based off our conversation and feedback with Edmonton last, or earlier this week. They, they switched the toggle switch so that now the K5 is very, very flexible. Before it was lockstep, you've got to complete this lesson before you can go with this lesson and so on. And we know our kids are at different levels. Today, they switched that on, so there's much more flexibility. The teacher, the live session teaching is happening now with, and then they're also recording that. I've received a few emails from parents in the last couple of days, things are starting to turn around, we're getting in a routine, we're feeling better about it. And I've actually had a couple of just huge thank yous, thank you for providing a live, this program with a live teacher, this is a good for our family. I think one of the biggest hurdles still is, parents are now taking on a huge load as their child's teacher. Because it's not just sitting in front of a computer streaming eight hours a day and plugging in, it's, you have to really work to engage with your child to make sure they are based where they need to be. Again, 6-8 is very much, and more, way more independent. Had a great conversation with a parent last night who was both a fifth grader and a high and a middle school student who has special needs, and feels like it's going quite well for their family right now. So, so really, a total of, as of right now, K8, 74 participants. We started off at 97, I realize that's a drop, but I, again, I received emails regarding, this is our reason why we're going back onsite, yes, we're frustrated with the program, so we're going back onsite, we feel like we don't have any other choice. I did look at another option, looking at other vendors, but it just kept coming to barriers where it was going, there's still going to be some challenges. And if we were to make a switch midstream, I think, I think it would have been even more frustrating. So, and, and I didn't make that decision without some hesitation, but knowing the response, quite honestly, that we received from Edmonton, I was online with some of their executive team members, and they were really working with us and providing some additional personalized support for our families that I don't think that we would ever get with another vendor at this point in time, so.
They were very responsive.
Very responsive, they, they knew I was upset with them, but at the same time, we have a good working relationship, and I think they recognize that and they wanted to respond accordingly, so. And in my summary, it's really just kind of a summary of the events that have occurred, and we're moving forward. I think one significant detail for parents is, this should be flexible, it should not provoke anxiety. We want this to work for our families who have chosen this route because, for whatever reason, and that's fine. And we want to be supportive of them, and I think that's the most important thing, respect their needs and whatever.
We're at a much different place than we were a week ago, and I appreciate Josh's efforts in that. We moved a lot of parents and relieved a lot of anxiety. And there have been several families, you can see approximately 20 that chose to come back. And, you know, I know we received some very nice emails too, as far as, they've been very impressed with our first 10 dates and our mitigation practices, and they feel better about bringing their children back. And so, but again, I mean, everyone chose, made their decision onsite or at home online for various reasons and whatever reasons. Like Josh said, we just want to make sure that we're supportive of all those choices, all those reasons why, and help the families with whatever decision they make.
There's, there's still some hiccups, I'm not going to pretend that there's not, and there's still some, some communication and feedback about those challenges, but continuing to take those and relay that back to Edmonton and try to, try to get those things resolved, so.
Yeah, as we continually make those adjustments and tweaks to our onsite mitigation, we're going to continue to make adjustments and tweaks to the online, so.
Thanks, Josh. Any questions?
Good work.
I know that I've heard from more than one, a few parents that are doing the online that were pretty unhappy at the beginning, but have really let me know what a great job you've done and how happy and responsive you've been, so thank you for all the work that you put into that. So I heard for more than one that they're really.
That's great.
Feel good about how you've been in charge of getting this stuff going, so thank you.
Yeah, and great job, like with your work on your cohorts, the guest with your pod concept, that's what's controlling the contact tracing numbers, and it doesn't, you don't have to look very far into our neighborhood districts to see 200 kids out, you know, we're able to control that mostly because of what you guys did, just tremendous. And that wasn't something you didn't catch, that's, that did a lot of coordination.
No, and I mean, yeah, it's, that's what you did by 38 people, different groups, middle of health, all this stuff, there's a lot of work being done this summer, a lot of volunteer work. You know, people are getting paid to, you know, and, you know, I appreciate this, and I think the other thing I appreciate is that, no matter what our students chose and what our families chose, we're trying to support them the best we can. These are crazy situations that we're in, and everybody's having to turn on the dime and, I appreciate all the others. Next up, we have board learning. Davis, we should have two videos to play.
Yep.
Well, he's pulling those up, I want to do a little review of the categories. I have been keeping track of everybody's points. After tonight, we'll just have one person that is in charge, and I will send some things to help you get to them. Otherwise.
He can help you retrain the PA, he can retrain the club, he can help you.
No, this is a different set of videos.
IASB, thanks to Ken Robinson for his collaboration in developing this.
I think you guys saw this gentleman's shirt.
Discussion exercise. This is Luanne Gavest, and I'm on the board development team at IASB. This at-the-board table discussion exercise includes a video clip from a recent interview with Sir Ken, along with quotes from his book, Creative Schools, followed by some essential questions for your board team to discuss at your board table. And now, let's start with a quote from the book, Creative Schools. Sir Ken believes taking responsibility for change begins by accepting that change is within your power. He noted that the way we do school today does not have to be done the way it's always been done.
But there are all kinds of ways in which internal culture scores can be changed, be modified, and then great teachers, great principals do that all the time. There are all kinds of ways in which school boards can encourage innovation in school and get people to, as it were, color outside the lines, so they can get to think differently about their daily routines and habits. So you can make changes to the system, and some very effective changes are being made at that level. So you can make changes to the system as a whole, and I think that is an important role for school boards. I mean, school boards help to set the climate for education, because teachers have to operate within protocols with school boards, and then state governments lay down, so does school principals. So if school boards look hard at their role as when ecosystem of education, that the expectations they have, the criteria they set, that gives a framework for schools to do their work.
Sir Ken believes schools must engage students as individuals to raise achievement. In his book, he says, "All students are unique individuals with their own hopes, talents, anxieties, fears, passions, and aspirations. Engaging them as individuals is the heart of raising achievement." He described what it takes to make that happen. "The root task is to create the conditions in which the relationship between students and teachers can flourish. This is what I mean by revolutionizing education from the ground up. In doing this, there is a natural ecosystem of responsibilities. At the most fundamental level, the focus of education has to be on creating the conditions in which students will want and be able to learn. Everything else has to be arranged on that basis. As a board team, take a few moments and discuss these essential questions. What conversations has your team had that express your board's expectations on the importance of innovation and creativity as a framework for schools to do their work?"
Pause the video. Long point of Dan, we've talked, Dan is the one who constantly reminds us, you know, in his ideal world, we have an IEP for every student. And, you know, the question is, you know, how do, that's kind of an aspiration though, which is, we want to customize, we want each student to be able to reach their potential. How do we, as a system, move in that direction? And so, that's kind of the challenge we provide, which is, what are some solutions that the admin district team and the teachers can come up with that move us in that way where we can meet each of our students where they're at? Is one way I think that we do that.
I think it's innovation and creativity are hard, right? Because everybody wants evidence-based and, you know, all the, you know, so you have this, I don't want to be innovative, but I have to follow this evidence. You know, I look at this district, and I look at what we did to get to where we are for COVID-19, and basically, all heads had to come together, and everybody had, everybody had a piece, and I don't see how this would be any different. You know what I mean? If we push innovation and creativity from the top down, we know we have the people who do, you know what I mean? I mean, we, the, we just have to take the shackles off and let them know they can think that. I mean, I don't mean they're shackled, but they're shackled in the sense that this is what their brain normally thinks these days. And I really believe that there's a lot of great minds in this district that if you say you want you to come to the board quarterly, can show us new innovation, you know what I mean? I think we would see great growth.
And we do that in cities, and we have, I'm confident that they're working here, the.
For sure.
Mental health.
For sure.
Since they came and talked about all the things that they're doing this year, which
For sure.
That didn't come down from the top, as Davis said, they, that team kind of went off and figured out what they're going to do.
For sure.
Feed them up, and so.
Yep.
I think the biggest challenge with all of this is standardized testing and the focus on numbers of standardized testing, because these teachers are, it's very, it's stressed a lot to have good scores, good numbers with standardized testing. I think there are a lot of kids that have a lot more potential than, but they have to spend so much time getting our kids to score high on standardized testing that they don't have the time and the flexibility to meet kids where they are or work with different ways that their brains work. And I think a lot of times, because they have to spend so much time, because our, we, as a society or school systems base things on those testing scores, there's a lot of kids that don't get to see their potential because we're so focused on them scoring in that very particular thing in that certain way. So they don't get to use their potential in all the other ways that they use. So that's a challenge, I don't know what, what the solution is to that, but I think just as a, as a country, we're so focused on testing scores, that I feel like our, our position in the world is going down because we're so focused on those scores, we're not allowed to have the creativity that we should. I mean, that's a, well, countrywide issue, I think, and I don't know what our station is to that, but.
And, and by that, you're, you're talking not only the standardized test, but you're talking just the strong focus on just the core area?
Right.
Yes, and not, not the talents outside of math or reading or.
Right.
Yes.
But I, I mean, if you look at our standing in the world over the years, because we're so hyper-focused on those things, our standing in the world is actually dropping.
On those test scores.
On those test scores.
But we're still the most innovative nation in the world.
Right.
Yes.
But on those testing, I think when kids are allowed to let their brains do what they want to do, they get better at those things, but we're so hyper-focused on those things, we're not letting their creative minds do what they want, and that's why, I think, in the standings in the world, on those things, because their brains only get to do those things.
What's our next question?
Now, while your board team discusses this question. How has the discussion and your board's expectations found expression in plans and policy?
That's something we'll have to work on, because, you know, the policy, you know, the policies are the overarching thing, I think, not taking, not taking a plus or a negative.
It's like, almost every time we do one of these, they push us, yes, the board, back to policy, we talked about diversity and hybrid, and we talked, you know, we talked about doing a work session, and, you know, maybe that we, we really just have a work session, we can figure out some of these, these sorts.
Well, that's, that's an important topic, and maybe that's a topic for our, for our mid-year, half-day workshop, so. We started talking about that, so that's, I think it's a, it's a, it's a good point, I think, you know, we, how do we, how do we push, push this out in a way that's within our role? It's one thing to encourage it and say, well, we've got people there, but how do we make it more fruitful, you know? How do we go to Jessica and say, reinvent early childhood education in an innovative way?
She'd do it though.
She would.
There's a whole way to see it.
You need tomorrow? Well, when it comes to innovation, though, COVID has caused us to think innovatively because, you know, we've had some outstanding literacy practices, and you've become familiar with all those practices, but because of some of the mitigation things, we can't actually practice that way. So how do we still deliver rock-solid instruction, effective instruction, in, with limitations that we've been handed? So how, sort of thinking innovatively, and, and I know that's where, Dan, you said, all hands on desk, and we put heads together, and I know that's what our, our principals are doing with their leadership team, of CLTs, it's like, how do we, this CLT came up with this, well, let's share it out with the rest of the building.
I think that, I think that's part of the issue that I did, we talked about this year, we look at our strategic plan and our processes that we laid out, and where we talk about, where we talk about these leadership teams and the CLTs, and where we talk about them performing things up through the system, you know, that maybe, you know, try here, try there, how these, how these things work, and maybe there's a process by which things are tried out, and, you know, either the board can kind of lay out a, a policy on how that, on how that should be structured, so you can try some of these innovative things and try, and try to move things forward.
Pause the video now, while your board team discusses this question. How can your board help create conditions in which all students How can your board help create conditions in which all students want and are able to learn? Pause the video now while your board team discusses this question.
I, I'll just, I'll set up, I, I think the, the challenge here is less about having to want and able to learn as how do we continue that, because when you look at those kids, how do we, how do we keep that up? You know, we look at the numbers and it's not just here. Those kids that are excited about being at school every day, it goes down the longer there's a time. So how do we, and we realize that there's different, they go different through, through cycles of life, but how do we keep that engagement? You look at that kindergarten or those first graders and they're so excited to be at school. And, you know, how do you create something that continues on and, you know?
At the beginning of this video, when they were quoting excerpts from this book, one of the, one of the, one of the lines in one of the quotes was, it's, it's all about that, just paraphrase, that relationship between the students and the teachers and building that relationships. I think that's for that want. If there's a strong relationship with teacher-student, then no want.
Yeah, I.
Once the gentleman from New Zealand, they came back and we were at the, at the, uh, the deal of the morning, I mean, he talked about the problem that some of those inner-city schools were, they didn't have those relationships. As soon as those teachers were there a year, they got a year under their belt, they were leaving, going on the district. And as soon as they incentivized, they're just, you know, built those relationships, the teacher didn't want to leave, but then the students wanted to come back. And even he himself, he had opportunities to go other places, he stayed and that school is thriving because of the relationships.
And I, building on that, Dan, you remember, one of the trains we had way back, they talked about relationships. They talked about, you know, if a kid had zero relationships with, with adults at school, there, there's less than a 50% chance that they were going to finish, they were going to graduate. If, if you got one relationship, it was 74, if two made it over 90%, and you got that third relationship in school and it was 99, or 99% like that, that kid was going to graduate school. And so, it is about the relationships.
For sure. And then I think we're all getting to the same point in, in, it's the person at the front of the room and their relationship with their students. So, you know, really that person, the teacher, needs our help, I think, in giving them those opportunities. And if, if it's training or whatever, and you're just interested in the caveat, Northwestern University, Department of Orthopedics, the two most dynamic teachers are footman for that, right? Five residents out of five residents, we need a footman, right? Because those people are passionate about, this was Morris's class, they were just passionate about it, so everybody fed off that passion. Um, and so I think those are some of the, the things that, you know, we can hopefully help.
Chris, the task now starts to give us two videos tonight, so now we're on to number two.
ISB thanks Sir Ken Robinson for his collaboration in developing this board discussion exercise. This is Luann Givest and I'm on the board development team at ISB. This at-the-board-table discussion exercise includes a video clip from a recent interview with Sir Ken, along with a quote from his book, Creative Schools, followed by some essential questions for your board team to discuss at the board table. And now, let's begin by hearing from Sir Ken Robinson. Welcome, everyone. My name is Luann Givest and I'm on the board development team here at ISB. And it is my supreme honor to be speaking with our keynote speaker for upcoming convention on November 21st, Sir Ken Robinson. Sir Ken, you travel all around the world, literally speaking to people everywhere. Um, you're an education expert and yet you are taking time out of your busy schedule to come and speak to school board members in November. And in fact, we will be having an election in November, uh, where we will have brand-new board members who had only been elected by about 16 days. So can you talk a little bit about why you're inspired to come to Iowa and speak to school board members here?
Well, thank you, Luann. There are a couple of reasons. One is that I do travel a lot and one of the reasons for that is that education is a global issue. There are districts, schools, countries, all over the world, that are wrestling with the sorts of issues that school boards in Iowa are wrestling with. We live in a, a world of prodigious change, technologically, culturally, socially, environmentally. And education is one of the most important processes that we design to help our children engage with the present and to look forward to and engage with the future. So it's, what sort of education we need, how it should work, is a global preparation. So the issues that school boards in Iowa are facing are not unique to Iowa, although they have a unique term. Because this is the point, as well as being a global issue, education is always local. It's local communities, local families, local children, local businesses. So it's very important to keep the argument on the ground as well and to see how they manifest in, in different communities. So I'm always delighted to come along to a community that's thinking hard about its own future education and the future of children. So the, for me, it's a very important part of the work I do. And it's particularly important, secondly, to talk with school boards, because school boards are right at the forefront of helping to encourage and support the sorts of changes that are needed. And it's very important, I think, that their agenda is clear, that their priorities are properly debated, and that they help schools to set the right course for the future.
Sir Ken believes in the ability of Iowa school and AEA board teams to be leaders of change. In his book, Creative Schools, he states, "The challenge is not to fix the system, but to change it, not to reform it, but to transform it. We are in a position as never before to use our creative and technological resources to change that. We now have limitless opportunities to engage young people's imaginations and to provide forms of teaching and learning that are highly customized to them. Although education is now a global issue, it is inevitably a grassroots process. Understanding that is the key to transformation." As a board team, take a few moments and discuss these essential questions. What steps do you need to take to ensure that your board's agenda is clear, that your priorities are properly debated, and that you help schools to set the right course for the future? Pause the video.
You know, if that's a half-day work session or.
That was going to be my comment, if, if, we just have to keep the communication line and the relationship line with the administration on a great, positive frame field. They've got to utilize PSYACT to bring in some community employees to what their goals are. And we have to collectively combine all that and say, okay, based on what we're hearing and where our thoughts are, this is where we want to go. I think, uh, I think we do a good job of that on a, on a year-by-year basis. I think the harder part is to say, how do we extend that out? We go back to last year, how do we look at program, like, what do we want to look like in five years? What, what are we trying to get to? It's, it's easy to do the internal thing, which is we want to get better. And it's easy for me as an engineer, because it's like continuous process improvement. It's like every year we just try to get better and we're going to move in the right direction. We kind of work that way, but it's hard to make a transfer, transformative improvement in that way. So how, how do we look more broadly and say, here's our aspirational goal, where we want to be in five or 10 years, what do we want to look like, you know? I think that's a, that's a topic that's well worth discussing. More often than I think once a decade, we have it as we revise our vision and our mission.
Now, while your board team discusses this question. How well is your district or AEA doing in creating limitless opportunities to engage young people's imaginations and to provide forms of teaching and learning that are highly customized to them? What is going well and how can your board strengthen this effort? Pause the video and discuss these questions.
If we look at curriculum, actually, if we, we try to have a variety of options available, and I think if we, we talk about an admission and relevant, rigorous and relevant, uh, opportunities to, to order, I think that's the, that's the challenge. I mean, it's not just in the classroom, it exists in everything, everything that we, we provide to our students. I think that's one way of trying to, trying to do that, I think, celebrating what happens in our, like, our, with our fine arts program, we have the successes that we have. You know, some of them are outside that, that, that core literacy, mathematics, science area. Those are important, those are important areas. And I think we make an effort to, to highlight those and the successes we have with those. And this year's will be a little bit harder with real competitions for them to have, you know? I think, this is a little bit, a different program, they're saying, we're not going to, we're not going to have tournaments and they're not going to do these other things. And it's going to be a challenge this year to, to make sure they get those opportunities. But, you know, what, what can we do, uh, to help them celebrate and, and make the most of, of their passions?
I think, um, you're near enough to hold me, Josh, you guys went down Liberty.
Yeah, Liberty, Missouri.
Yeah, and so they, they have a different way of kind of looking at things. And in, in allowing and encouraging a pocket of teachers to try some of these things. To help, you know, kind of push that out, not push it out, but just, you know, they went down there, they see, get two or three that really want to think about this and maybe start this out and then maybe just starts the fire and this is how we go, or maybe we try something else. But just really trying to, to look at what other people are doing and, and giving opportunities for those sort of things to be, um, provided to students and, and so.
Always a fine balance, because you want to innovate, but you also want to work so that you're balancing the system, so you don't break the system by, by putting all these innovations in place, which is chaos.
Yeah.
It's somewhat organized chaos, where you still have the system in place. We still have some of those guidelines that we're working with them, but then saying, okay, over here, let's, let's take, let's tweak this. But it's, it's like systems thinking. You tweak one thing, it, it may impact this or this, so it's trying to anticipate, if we tweak this and make this happen, how does that make an impact?
Well, I know, I know down at Liberty, they let a couple of teachers just go. And their students were so engaged that the other teachers start coming, you know what I mean? And so, you know, those are opportunities too, you know, if there's somebody who's passionate about this, the teacher is providing some of those opportunities.
What area was that in that they were kind of set free on?
You know? Personalized learning, which we've talked about, and I think their next big thing is, well, no, personalized learning. They actually skipped, I think they actually skipped over standard-based with the proficiency-based, which is, that's what RPV is coming up in October, is to start looking proficiency-based grading.
Right.
Teaching, all that. Um, and then they're, they're jumping into, I think they're switching to jumping to competency-based. And they're actually visiting the school district in Wisconsin, who's doing, has been doing competency-based.
Right.
Um, so it's just, it's, it's looking at the research and what's out there and then playing with that. But it's, it's being intentional.
Right.
And it's intentional leadership where we are going to intentionally do this and not just by happenstance.
Right.
Because we have, there's teachers in every district who are trying this or doing that, but more is kind of an isolated microcosm and nobody really knows what's going on. And then sometimes what happens is, like I said, breaking the system, it'll be, we're doing this, but we're moving at a much faster rate. And then we, then we unintentionally, um, have, like I told Jess, thousands have nots. No one will have have-nots. Everybody would know, right? Have the same knowledge. Now, you, it, now this team or this teacher may be a little bit ahead, but how are we utilizing them and being intentional about the system to bring the system along?
For sure. And I think it's really easy, I'm going to pair a phrase from our new CEO, is this red light thinking. Sometimes we're so afraid that we're going to break the system, we won't try to push the system. You know what I mean? And sometimes we just have to be like, we're willing to, you know, push a little and not think about all the, what we better, you know, because then you never start. You know, and so I think that's one of the things that can be encouraged from, from the board, is like, it's okay to try some of these things, you know?
Well, I would think even as a board, I feel like we're pretty open to stuff, you know? We're always out there trying to learn and.
Sure.
I mean, I think we're pretty open for stuff that Josh and the administration teachers come up with, right?
Yeah, for sure. I think it's, but if it's more in a statement and it's more in our policy, then it, it's like our rubber stamp. You know what I mean? As opposed to we briefly talk about it here and then it sits and collects dust for three months and.
Just more cloud tests.
Right.
Well, that was the end of that one. So, cocking points.
Sure. So I'm going to go way back to the very beginning again, I thought that Josh just admitted about how wonderful it was to think that we started out with a group of half-teachers on something that was pretty much specific to them. But then mid-stream, we get it with the pandemic and you had the foresight, they had the foresight, immediately be able to say, look, if there's an opportunity here, to expand this concept and help us all long-term. And I think it feeds right back into what we've been talking about with, or learning on innovation and creativity and, and customized learning. And I don't think any of us as competitors that are opposed to any of that stuff. So I'm, I'm excited to see where that, where the learning concept goes. And if we can start having a little bit more individualized learning, I think that will help. Tim, you mentioned with, kids are excited when they're little and then they start to lose interest. And it's because sometimes you just kind of get bored with the substance, right? I'm either not interested in that or I'm already beyond that. And so if we can focus then in a different direction and say, hey, why don't you go over and work on this a little bit on your own? I think that's, that's tremendous potential, so thank you.
Jimmy?
Um, I think the, the mental health. We, the return to learn and everything, we've been focused so much and the community and everything so much on, on COVID that it's really good to hear that they are helping, you know, what they're doing and, and the things that they're doing and that they're, you know, bringing the staff into what, what they're doing too and making sure the staff. I know, you know, there's a lot of numbers that were really anxious before the study too. So the fact that they're focusing on the students and on the staff and, um, that's encouraging just because that hasn't been a lot in the discussion, because we've been, you know, very focused on them. So I'm really thankful that we have the counselors that we do so that they have taken that on and it sounds like they're doing a pretty good job of that too, so.
Dan?
Well, two for two, that's what I was going to talk about.
You should just wait till you get the last person.
So I'll, I'll just jump to the admin report. And the amount of work that was put in and how, I know those few families, the concerns were from the beginning, that there were going to be the haves in school and the have-nots out of school. And how we just also embraced that choice. And, and again, I'm proud of our district that we gave our families a choice. And, um, that, that we're supporting both choices. Um, and I'm going to tell you a quick, a quick funny story. My sister sent to me, her son's a teacher in Oregon, and it is, when students realize there's no longer ever going to be a snow day again, because they can always go online. And my wife's like, don't tell people that.
Yeah, you guys covered everything. I, I wrote down, give, give them a choice, right, in the community and I talked to other board members weekly in other districts. And, you know, I think we are looked upon in this area as a kind of a leader and we're being compared.
And, you know, I think we are looked upon in this area as a kind of leader, and we're being compared. Doesn't matter if it's our website, if it's, you know, I mean, people are checking us out. And so I think we've done a great job already, just with the, you know, the process and if somebody is positive and how we reacted to it. So that and all with the momentum, I mean, that's one of the things that we've been hit up on as board members. We've seen the emails, we've talked to people, and Josh, you've done a great job. So I'm impressed with it, and I know it's not perfect, but once again, it was the choice. And so whatever, you know, system or whatever the dynamic is at the house and the needs are, we want to give it our best, all of it. And I think we're we're trying our best. It's not perfect, but they got a choice, and we'll keep fighting for it.
I'm gonna go back to the the mental health and the relationship things we talked a little bit about, and I've been impressed with, you know, having to read through some buses, and I'll be right another one in the morning. And the relationships, even during that breach on these kids have with the people, you oftentimes think about it with their teachers, but it's not just the teachers, it's the bus drivers, it's the custodians, it's the associates, it's the librarians, it's the nurses, it's the counselors. It's everybody they're encountering in in the building, the folks in the lunchroom. You know, all those people are relationships these kids have, and they have such a positive impact on these kids. You know, just watching the watching these little kids, you know, smile as they get on the bus, because it's, you know, it's this it's this bus driver, and you're like, you know, it's just like, you know, you don't think about that as your as a community member, about how important these behind-the-scenes people are to the experience that our kids have. And I think a shout out to all of them. And so if you see them around the building, in downtown, just remember that they are they may not be the ones you kids want to talk to you about, but they they touch them every day in terms of strengthening those relationships and bonds at school.
First they see you, last they see you.
With that, our next regular board meeting is Thursday, October sixteenth, twenty twenty, at five thirty P M here. Uh, as you look forward in your calendars, remember that the Iowa Association of School Boards meeting in November is virtual. Um, and so personally, I don't know what, I don't know how that's laid out yet. We'll get get additional detail on that, Chris is taking into that. But keep that in mind as you as you go to that. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So, motion by Coons. I think by a loss, all those in favor, say an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Most in favor, oh, we were supposed to say happy birthday to Josh.
Oh, today?
So we can have the media, and we can all say happy birthday to Josh. The media's over, turn everything off, and then we can say happy birthday to Josh.